This meeting has come to order today, Friday, February 24th, 2017. This is a special study session of the Prescott City Council. I was going to wait a few more minutes until the city manager got in here, but it looks like he might be delayed for a few minutes. So, anyway, some time back, the city manager and I started looking at economic development, trying to figure out how we wanted to move forward for the city. And we were put in contact with Brad Casper with OHN H down in Phoenix. And we've been talking to him about some of his ideas. We've also talked to some other people from some universities. We've got Jim Robier. He's an individual who's worked quite hard and been very successful in the technology area and starting companies. Brad and Chris, we have people here today that, of course, are from the council. We have businessmen here, just general citizens. And, you know, I know that the people that are here have worked on some of the ad hoc committees we've had on economic development. We have some members from the chamber here. And, you know, I think we are very interested in hearing what you have to say on trying to help us move forward in economic development. So, I'll have Brad go ahead and make the introduction.
Good afternoon, and thank you for being here. It's a great pleasure for me to come back up to Prescott. My name is Brad Casper, and I built a house in Prescott a couple of years ago. I moved my sister to Prescott from Cincinnati last year, so she's going through her first winter up here and enjoying it immensely. But my interest in this meeting and my reason for introducing you to Chris Camacho today goes far beyond just my current quality of life. It's because I'm as committed, I hope, as you are to dynamically continuing to move Prescott forward. And I think our speaker today, Chris Camacho, I've come to know over the past few years. I moved to the Lower Valley in the Phoenix-Scottsdale area in '05. I was the president and CEO of the Dial Corporation at that time. And Dial was acquired by a German multinational known as Henkel. I left there after five and a half years. I eventually became president of the Phoenix Suns. Some of you probably recognize that name. And I did that for a very brief period of time, and then I went back into industry. I became the executive chairman of this marketing communications firm in Phoenix, formerly known as Owens-Harkey, is now known as OH Partners. And I think I met the mayor and eventually the city manager sometime in early fall about the idea of what could we do to help either with messaging that would help drive either tourism or economic development or both. And up to this time, it's been mostly just, you know, sensing and getting a little bit of a feedback on the direction that the city wants to go. And Chris Camacho, who is the president and CEO of GPEC, I had the pleasure of working with him while I was on the board at GPEC. He left for a brief period of time and went to Yuma, and then was brought back up to Phoenix to run the Economic Council. Chris is one of the most dynamic individuals I've ever met, and he is probably, in terms of the state of Arizona, I would argue, he is the number-one thought leader as it relates to economic development. And I would go so far as to say he's probably one of the leading thinkers in the United States about how public and private enterprise come together to drive, dynamically drive ahead the quality of life. And partially is a favor to me and partially because he has a soft spot for middle-market cities in the state of Arizona. This Midwesterner wanted to come up here today, see the cool, clean air, and also give you a little idea of how he thinks about economic development and how we might be able to translate some of that up here in Yavapai County. So, without further ado, Chris Camacho.
Mayor and council, well, first of all, thank you for having me here today. Is it better for me to stand there or stand here? What would be the best for you today to make sure we get the most out of our conversation? Does this work? Sorry to have my back to each of you, just maybe so you can hear. So, thank you, Brad, for all of the remarks, and certainly, this better be an incredible presentation with the way that he introduced me today. I'm excited to be here, yes, excited to come up, you know, to the wonderful community of Prescott. And, you know, my experience, just before I jump in, I want to tell you a little bit about myself and where I come from and why, when Brad asked if you have an interest in coming up to the community, you know, why this is interesting to me for a number of reasons. First, you know, we drive one of the most dynamic economic development strategies that exist in the entire United States in Phoenix, Arizona. And I've spent the last eight years working to educate policymakers, mayors, councilmen on what it takes to compete in the global marketplace. And leading an organization like GPEC, every year, we're recognized as being one of the top organizations. But that's not why I'm here. I'm not here to boast about the work that we do at GPEC. I spent four years in Yuma. After moving from St. Louis, my wife and I packed up the car, moved across the country and to the land of opportunity and found, after working in St. Louis for a few years and looking at all of the economic data, and as Brad would tell you, I'm very dynamically focused on data, data sciences, and really predictive analytics to help markets understand where they're at in their lifecycle, and then ultimately where they're going in their trajectory as a community. And so, is that, excuse me, one second. Is that mine? Okay. I'm just going to blame it on somebody else. If somebody in the audience, phones ringing. So, you know, as I look at, you know, communities, and just again, so you know where I'm coming from, I've spent a lot of time nationally. I'm on the secretary, former Secretary Pritzker's Investment Advisory Council for the United States, served on the Economic Innovation Group, which is a think tank that was created by the Facebook founder on how we ensure that capital is placed in other places beyond Silicon Valley and Boston and New York City, but other markets across the country. So, I have a soft spot. I come from a small town in Illinois, 40,000 a population, not too similar from this community. My parents were schoolteachers, and I had a big dream, a big aspiration to have an impact on future communities. And so, that's a little bit about me. And then how I got into the organization at GPEC is my predecessor, I actually brought down to Yuma when I was the CEO of Yuma, that focused on the binational work in northern Mexico and southwestern Arizona. To make a long story short, after I had brought him down to Yuma, he had asked if I would come up and become his number-two running GPEC, which is, again, a very prestigious organization nationally. So, after doing so for several years, Barry departed, and then I took over in 2014, and that moves us into where we are today. I spent the last two hours with Embry-Riddle's leadership here in the community, and I have a lot of thoughts after leaving that visit that I hope to share with you today. What I hope to leave you with, and again, I don't want this to be a one-way conversation, one-way dialogue, I really hope to extract it, just to, and broker a conversation with the private sector and the public sector, to really grasp what is the ambition of this community. The community has great charm driving around the circle. I've certainly brought my wife and kids up here, and we've been tourists here in the community in the past. But in addition, embracing all of your residents to really ascertain that the recognized value of not only ensuring you build a positive community with, you know, all of the attributes that all of your residents want, but the key common denominators in successful communities today are really three things. It's continuously focused on the livability of a community, and that's tied to the talent disposition. Are you ensuring that your education system is strong? Second is your ability to produce the right type of innovation in a community, so driving more, or more innovation intensity in a community or in a region. And then third is the export characteristic. We were having this conversation before we came here today. The export characteristic meaning how much of your industry is exporting a service or product that generates wealth back to your community. For Arizona, so for so long, we've relied on growth to drive our gross domestic product position. And what I would characterize is that the next 100 years, being that we're 100 years old, our cities, our state need to focus on strategies that are going to drive additional base industries and insulate us from just relying on growth so that when we do have a downturn like we had in 2008 to 2012, the recovery is shortened. But certainly, we don't have cities that are exposed because we're so reliant on people moving here, and we're so reliant on sales tax collection to drive our position. I don't have to explain that here today because most communities, you know, were exposed to that process. So, I'm going to run through just a quick presentation. Feel free, at any point in time, stop, ask me a question, I'll give you an observation, anybody from the audience, too. I was hoping this would be more of a roundtable format, kind of open theme, and you can give me your thoughts on anything you agree with, disagree with, and I'll just give you my experience of being in a very urban community and very rural community. And then, obviously, back in St. Louis, my experience there was more predicated on my tax work. So, I have a corporate tax strategy and public policy background, so I spent a lot of time analyzing performa models, which, none of which I will show you today, because I will lose the audience. So, with that in mind, just again, a little bit about who we are and again, where we come from. One of the things that separates GPEC as an organization, and this is feedback from our peers nationally, it's not all the deals we've done, it's not all the jobs that we've pursued, but it's our ability to really recognize the value of operating as a region, as one region, the public sector unified in one market strategy. Instead of having all of these convoluted disparate strategies, you have everyone within the trade area, within MSA, operating under one economic strategy. And I haven't read, I don't know if there's, you know, if that's happening today, if it's not happening today, I'm going to give you my boilerplate on best performing economic development strategies, notwithstanding, there's probably a lot of things I don't know about the community and your peer communities as well. But that is one thing, is companies decide where they're going to place headcount and talent, meaning recruitment primarily, they do care about, first and foremost, the trade area. Oftentimes, as a company comes into Phoenix, Metro Phoenix, they have no idea when they're leaving Mesa, moving into Phoenix, moving into Tempe, moving into Scottsdale, moving into the West Valley, they're borderless jurisdictions. And I would encourage you to run some math, because I share this with our economic development colleagues at the local level as well as our mayors directly. If you look and take into account when a company expands into a specific community, how many other communities benefit from that investment coming into their respective jurisdiction? The dollar cycle that exists from a company moving into Chandler, Arizona, there's going to be seven other jurisdictions, on average, impacted by that one singular location. So, Intel just made an announcement to place significant capital and new jobs into Chandler, Arizona. That will impact, at a minimum, 15 of our 23 communities because of the trade area. So, oftentimes, when companies are deciding, should they come to a Metro Phoenix market or somewhere else, they are assessing whether or not the region is unified, and they're working with one single voice. And that was really the inception of our organization. Dating back to 1989, there were eight cities that were competing with each other for auto malls, and they were actually incentivizing auto mall developers and even companies to move across jurisdictional lines and giving tax incentives and even cash, in some respects, to companies to move across these lines, which created no net economic gain. So, as part of joining GPEC, and as GPEC was formed in 1989, we required every single one of our cities to sign a protocol agreement that we no longer do that. And you will be asked to leave the organization if that's something a council or a mayor elects to do. So, we have all of our cities working together. We cannot control if a company's real estate lease comes up and they need to move to another location for growth or what have you, but in terms of local economic development support, we do not have our cities competing with one another, and I think that's very critical. In addition, why we've been, I think, you know, arguably very successful is we do have about 60-plus percent of our operating revenue coming from the private sector. So, when I began, we were about 50% public, 50% private in terms of our revenue. I've intentionally worked to hold our cities flat, our cities level, and increased private sector money. And as a byproduct of that, our organization, somebody asked me about the Phoenix 40, that's a known term, meaning 40 CEOs that have driven a lot of Phoenix, you know, CEO-level success. Within our organization, we are governed by a public-private board, but my executive board is 100% private. These are CEOs that recognize the pace and speed and intensity that's required to win companies and also, you know, recruit and retain companies. And as a byproduct, I'm able to hire very high-level staff, and that's very critical in any, you know, jurisdiction around the country, because our economic development staff, or I should say, staffs across the country are very challenged to find really talented individuals. So, these are some of the things that we do in terms of supporting our 23 cities in the county. As I mentioned Embry-Riddle, I find this across the country where communities self-identify their opportunities based upon one or two conversations that they have. Meaning, Joe down the street has an aerospace company, and Joe thinks that we should be going after these kind of firms, so let's go after these kind of firms and try to recruit them to Prescott, for example. No one's told me that, that's just hypothetical. But when, what we do at GPEC is we put a fine-tooth comb to the data science side to understand where do you have competency in terms of your labor pool, and where do you have competency and concentration of certain types of businesses, so that then your identity becomes your legacy industries aligned with where future-level investment's going. So, it may sound really sophisticated to those not in this every day, but this is a kind of research work, you know, that we support our communities in and really develop that every year. So, we know exactly where we're targeting, we know exactly what our value proposition is, and we know how to deploy resources against those opportunities. The other things we do, and again, I'm not going to go through each one of these, but the conversation has changed away from when I started this 15 years ago, how many times I would get into a conversation about the point of sale of a product, the supply chain, and then the cost of doing business. Arizona is a very competitive cost offering, certainly against California, but against other markets as well. The distinction today, however, for all of the industries and jobs that each of you want to recruit, high-wage jobs, more industry diversification, is largely predicated on, do you have the talent delivery system to meet the need of a company? And what that means in layman's terms is your education system, K through 20, producing the types of individuals that would meet the needs of the company and measuring the leakage that you have of people being produced through Embry-Riddle, for example, or Prescott College or the other offerings, Yavapai, for example, are they leaving the market? So, it's incredibly important that you have the data side to showcase to companies with merit as opposed to just instincts. So, everything that we do within our organization is based upon in-depth data discovery. And, you know, the rest of, you know, what I'm going to talk about today is more so the kind of the case building and the aspect of, you know, why regional economic development matters. How many times do I talk to a mayor in greater Phoenix that says, "Chris, I want you to bring my community the next deal." Forget the other 22. I want you to bring the next biosciences company or the next med device company to our market. And instead, I frame the conversation around community readiness. How ready are you for that industry? If you're interested in biosciences or med device, if you're interested in semiconductor, if you're interested in software, how readily positioned are you across real estate, across labor, across infrastructure, for the prerequisite needs of that industry? Because today, corporate America, unlike ever before, I would argue, has more options, more options in terms of locations than ever before. And what they're doing is they're de-risking their investment strategy. And what I mean by that is they're taking a pool of all these different sites across the country, states, and then ultimately cities, down to sites, and they're figuring out which is the least risky position for me to move forward. So, you've probably heard other people talk about staying on the list, staying on the site-selection list. What I would argue, today's environment is so laden on talent, more so than anything else, but at the, you know, the cross-point with that is also community readiness. And again, as Brad knows, all the time I spend in all these metros outside even greater Phoenix, and I do this nationally for other regions, and I'm happy to help, you know, as you see fit, and help your economic development staff, if I had the pleasure of working with as well. So, again, operating as one region, and that sounds easy to say, but to get cities within, you know, this region to operate as one is critically important, because companies are going to care about, you know, assessing whether or not you have all of the attributes of a market, all of the modern readiness assessed, and making sure that your community is ready to compete. So, you know, I talked a little bit about why regionalism works already. A lot of this is about getting everyone on the same page. And so, part of the GPEC strategy is we educate our mayors, which I convene our mayors and our supervisors once a quarter, and we talk about pretty advanced things like sensors and IOT and autonomous vehicles and all these next-generation technologies that we will see in greater Phoenix. What I would argue with, just again, my top-line review of this region, tremendous opportunities in cybersecurity and cyber defense, certainly, you know, playing to the strengths of Embry-Riddle, I think you're kind of a boutique market where you could capture a lot of the California leakage of companies that aren't necessarily going to expand 1,000 jobs outside of California, but your 25 to 50-person engineering shops, and we can get into this in more detail, being hyper-focused really matters, especially when you have limited resources. And even GPEC, we have limited resources, so we have to be very smart about how we deploy these efforts. So, let's talk just a little bit about the model itself, and, you know, how do you actually put this together? I know you have at least, I went online, I went to Google, and I Googled Prescott economic development, and I got your Regional Economic Development Group, I got a Prescott Valley regional, what seemed like a regional group, got the city, you know, group, all of which had kind of disparate industry-targeting identities. And so, again, if I were a California company typing in Prescott or Arizona or, you know, and I would even go as far as to say, creating that identity around cybersecurity and aeronautics, for example, that would be what I would be hoping the search came up to recognize, and Brad and his firm actually know this much better than I do, but how to actually measure what you're placing out in terms of public identity for your community. But in regards to running a contemporary model, you know, part of the getting the private sector engaged and involved shows clients that you have the right people at the table, and you're mitigating the lack of, confidence isn't the right word, but the lack of notoriety of a mover to a market that might be considering placing headcount and assets here. You want to have the private sector at the table, because they're going to give, lend confidence to complement the government side. And you'd be surprised how critical that is of having, you know, developers at the table, architects at the table, industry at the table, all in a very pro-growth but thoughtful growth approach. And so, the thing that, you know, again, I would be thinking about if I were in your shoes, it's not necessarily how to compete with Phoenix, it's how to showcase your unique attributes, your unique industry identity, and then placing that in a very distinct and deliberate marketing strategy, if your intent is to grow industry. The second facet of what I'd be thinking about is retention expansion, which I'm sure the team, you know, does here, and what that means in layman's terms, how are you visiting your base industry companies and your industries that are poised for high growth and ensuring you're not just having, I always tell my team, a "how you doing" conversation? Okay? That bothers me when I have my team going out, interacting with a company, being unprepared. So, what I mean by that, and this goes back to the data intelligence side, is every, any time I send a team out to go meet with a software company, for example, they're going in knowing just as much about the company's industry, they're knowing just as much about the company's business model, where the risks are, the threats, you know, to their overall business model, but where are the opportunities for growth within their own industry strategy? And what that does is it leads to a much more productive conversation about growth, about suppliers, about, you know, how they, their operating environment, how conducive is that for, you know, that company in Prescott specifically? So, those are things I would be thinking about in terms of continuing to improve, you know, the overall position of your market. The other aspect of an EDO is being a service organization. And again, you know, I don't want to be talking at you for the next 20 minutes, I'm going to be brief on some of this, but it's amazing how important city managers are, and you know this, but not often as respected as, you know, I wish everybody appreciated, is the challenge of capital improvement projects and really community planning lends to building the right employment centers, the right industrial parks or commerce parks. Because, again, going back to the risk comment, companies today, unlike ever before, are looking at turnkey solutions that mitigate their risk. So, say you had one of those companies I mentioned, a cybersecurity company, 50 people, that on the labor side, that'd be pretty conducive for your labor pool today. On the readiness side, I don't know the answer to that. Do you have ready product, Class A office space? Do you have identified incubator space that's conducive for these kind of uses? And, you know, an opportunity that I saw today, I think the numbers I heard, and Brad, you can correct me if I'm wrong, something like 300 total acres at Embry-Riddle, 90-something of which is being utilized. To me, this is a double-down opportunity where you could look at a major public-private partnership for a Sky Song-type operation, if you're familiar with that ASU Sky Song in Phoenix or Scottsdale, where you have a public-private partnership coming together along with a tech shop kind of model, if you're familiar with Tech Shop at all. How many students I saw that are in applied learning models today that I bet, if I were to guess, your talent leakage is pretty significant, meaning Embry-Riddle grads probably depart and go to Phoenix and somewhere else, go to California. If you were to create your own organic strategy around incubating the talent and utilizing a public-private vehicle to get specific tooling equipment that would allow them to test and experiment on new technologies and new IP, new intellectual property, that would be a place where I think you would see immediate opportunity. And when I say immediate, immediate's 10 years. Okay? So, that's the other thing I often talk about, is when I talk to policymakers, they're expecting, you know, year-one change in behavior. These kind of commitments, you know, are multi-year or even multi-decade strategies that have to be built, but can only be built by the public. These largely have to be driven by the private sector, supported by the public sector, and, you know, that's just one instinct after two hours of being here. So, probably a lot more things we would be thinking about, but...
Chris, sorry, but on this Sky Song, the impact that that's had, I don't know when that started, it started about seven years ago, and how that's grown, what is, in your opinion, what is the impact Sky Song has had on economic development in the Phoenix area? I'm just curious. Hey, second question today is, one of the things, I've been here 16 years, ten in Scottsdale, one of the things that drives me crazy is from an investment standpoint, venture capital, private equity, you know, all of that. So, from an incubation standpoint, obviously, things become successful because they have money. So, first question is the impact that Sky Song has had, and what do you think about that, and then, too, is from economic development, from a funding standpoint, obviously, right?
Sure. Yeah, so, the question about Sky Song and its development cycle. So, it's about 10 years old, and Sky Song was a public-private partnership with the city, a, you know, essentially a private lending arm, and ASU, Arizona State University. And so, what's occurred started with the idea of building, really incubation space was the original premise. It's actually, from a metamorphosis perspective, we have, I think it's five buildings now occupied by the leading education technology companies, the leading software companies, and now we're even seeing large tech wanting to come in and access, this is about five miles north of the main campus at ASU. But that's really the, and I would say, the intended purpose was an incubator, and ultimately what occurred were these spec suites for existing disruptive tech companies to come and be around each other. So, it's becoming certainly an anchor economic engine for South Scottsdale, which historically was auto mall role, row, that has been displaced. If anybody drives along McDowell Road anytime soon, you'd be shocked how different it is today because of these innovation strategies. So, one thing I'll say, too, and I'm going to give a broad stroke to this next comment, but I believe it, is coming from St. Louis where you had to be intentional. Okay? So, Arizona, we've really relied on growth, and we've relied on relocation of people, and people coming from Canada and Illinois and all over the Midwest and California, that's really driven our, you know, economic engine for so many years, almost since our inception, I would argue. The next 100 years are going to be defined by, in my opinion, our intentional planning. So, think of the conversations that were had in the early part of the 1900s that centered on, at some point, I'm sure some groups like this were sitting in rooms saying, "How are we going to get water into, you know, areas from the Colorado River?" And the CIP was, you know, the Central Arizona Project was manifested and ultimately built. I feel like we're under that kind of same next trajectory kind of required thinking for the next 100 years. And I do think the difference is, instead of falling on the federal government, falling on the state government, just because I think the rules of engagement are changing, I think it's going to be incumbent upon our communities to really drive the intentional strategies to build commerce parks, to build the kind of things that the gentleman mentioned in public-private partnerships. Now, it's easy for me to stand up here and say that when communities, every community's in the same spot, you have limited dollars or no dollars, right? But the reality is, I'm seeing this across the country where cities are devising now their own strategies on the economy and intentionally investing in things they know that they know are going to have return through public-private partnership models, instead of relying on the state to drive the innovation model. And that was really the case in the 1980s and 1990s, early part of 2000s. I think that model is becoming more extinct, just like relying on the federal government's becoming, you know, less of an opportunity for states. So, again, I think part of, you know, and very candidly, if the mayor of Scottsdale were here today, he would probably tell you originally, you probably know this, he was not the biggest fan. I mean, he was not the one that put, wanted to put everything on the line for that investment because it was risky, it was, you know, risky relative, you know, because it was a public-private partnership before its time, and it was the city putting in its own credit on the line if that failed. And there were some things that I think the mayor and council were very skeptical about initially, and if they were here today, I bet he would, you know, the mayor, Lane, and others would say, "What an incredible job and economic output that anchor has been." So, that's one of many things that, again, City of Scottsdale and others have done, but again, it's intentional economic development, which is very different than promotions. And I want to make sure that that sinks in, because I've seen that and I still see it. There's a difference between being good at promoting, and there's, you know, a long-term strategy with intentional investment is the other side. So, let me, all these kind of things are intertwined here, so I'm not going to, I know I've kind of touched on a lot of these about behavior. So, let me give you this example, too, because this, say 10 years from now, you have the organization set up as you see fit with all the communities participating. About three years ago, I had a community that came to me and said, you know, "I think we're going to pull out of the organization because we haven't had a deal in the last few years." And I said, "Okay, well, let me tell you all the things that I think you need to be doing to compete for industry, retain in the recruitment side." We went through every single topic that I'm mentioning here today. through every single topic that I'm mentioning here today in terms of infrastructure, in terms of connectivity and mobility and public transit, you know, labor data, all of the attributes that a community needs to know about itself. And one of the challenges with this respective community was they had no Class A office product. So no office product that was conducive for use. 80% of our projects come in need an existing space, 80%. Okay? So that leaves 20% if you don't have existing building stock. Whether you're a tech company from California and you're looking at moving five engineers over, or you're Intel, you know, a lot of the time, the existing stock is what gets people confident that the market could bear the expansion. And so what we're doing is working with a lot of our West Valley cities, if you're familiar with Phoenix, a lot of the West Valley cities are younger, they're more rooftops, less jobs, activity, and we're working with them on embracing their own strategies of what they're going to need to do to invest in their own communities so they can compete within the overall region. So lastly, I'm going to just talk to a few final slides here, and this is kind of touches back to my initial conversation about data, is knowing your product. How many times, you know, in Yuma, I remember this distinctly, I would go in on these listening tours and I'd talk to the agricultural leaders, I would talk to the manufacturing base, and I would talk to our service sector, call center sector, and every time I would get, "This is the sector we should focus on." And not knowing any better at the time, I would go with the general feedback and then we'd go out and do marketing strategy, spend a fair amount of resource on trying to recruit those companies. And in hindsight now, if I would have gone through the assessment of where do we, where do we truly have a value proposition for companies? And I will tell you, this community, again, after two hours and just a few hours I spent on research before I came up here, California today is 32% of our pipeline. 32% of all of our projects, 280 projects that we have, are from California. Where this community, assuming it creates a unique identity in an advanced industry like cyber or something like that, I would be thinking about a very narrowed pathway into California that creates that identity to show not only your livability attributes, which you should be very proud of, but also the talent disposition of this market and the feeder that you would have to those kind of firms, and then measuring the leakage that you have of your talent leaving the market. And don't view that as a bad thing, it's a reality. And if you're talking to companies, you probably wouldn't lead with that as a marketing brochure. But as you're talking to companies, ironically enough, that's what they care about. So when they come to me and they say, "Chris, how many people has Honeywell laid off in the last year?" I have to know that. I have to know that if any of our major defense industry has contracted, that's good for the new entrant employer because that means they know that the talent's going to be there versus going into a market where you're going to have cannibalism occur, meaning, you know, employee turnover because there's not enough elasticity in the market. So knowing your product really matters. The second realm of this is knowing where you stack up. Okay? So if you get enough of your knowing, you know, again, what you have to offer, creating unique value propositioning, it's really the inventory of understanding the cost of doing business, the product offering need that the company may have or set of companies may have, the infrastructure requirements. I always enjoy when I get communities sending me raw dirt and say, "Chris, go sell this to Microsoft." And I say, "Well, Microsoft, this raw piece of dirt would probably have an 18-month entitlement process. You need to expand water, wastewater, fiber, natural gas, and power." And going back to the risk conversation I had earlier, they're going to look at the dirt and they're going to find 1,000 sites that have that infrastructure across the country. So unless you have that in turnkey form, at least knowing where they're at or having the pathway of knowing how to get the infrastructure there, that's a risk factor that companies have today. So that's, again, more heavy, heavier investment and heavy, kind of more manufacturing laden. But even the office side is going to assess your amenity offerings. Do you have amenities for my people to go to lunch? Are you going to, you know, the livability attributes in terms of quality of life, those are the kind of things that you have to have measured in competitive context. So it's not just Prescott, Prescott Valley and the whole region talking about how you compete, it's you knowing other competitor markets. I'll give you one final example on this, not to bore you with the Phoenix details, but I think it helps you understand our philosophy. So if I have a California software company coming to Phoenix, I'm actually not pitching them on Phoenix. What I'm doing is acting as an advisor, as if I was advising the company on how they would be thinking about Seattle, Denver, Austin, Phoenix, and any other market they're thinking about. And I send my teams to these competitor markets to really understand how interesting is Seattle relative to the tech scene? What kind of redevelopment strategies have they had to ensure that there's, or see if there are districts of hubs of software types of companies? So I know how we compete and if our value proposition has merit. So I give you that level of depth, not only the internal data, but I send teams out on our side to review competitor markets as well so we know what we're working with. Because I will tell you, the digitization of the internet has changed the world completely. So no longer does a company come in, I always love telling the story when I was in Yuma, a company comes in and expects a meeting with the mayor and a handshake deal in the back room of a cigar bar, that doesn't happen anymore. Well, it doesn't happen in Phoenix, I know. It didn't happen in Yuma, maybe it happened somewhere across the US. But today, companies are coming in with so much information about markets, you're validating or invalidating the information that they have. And so that's why all of this other competitor market context matters. So lastly is the local evaluation, this kind of touched on the preparation and readiness side. And we go through with every one of our communities every year, a readiness assessment. And, you know, currently Prescott, Prescott Valley, unless there's some kind of new, you know, super mode of transits, not necessarily in the metro Phoenix market, but every one of our cities goes through this process where we assess, how ready are they to compete for a software job or software company? How ready are they to compete for an advanced manufacturing use? How ready are they to compete for every one of the industries that they want? And we're very black and white with them, very honest, and we give them direct feedback as to whether they're ready. And so, you know, this has been probably the most fruitful thing that we've done with our economic development teams because it creates an honest dialogue about what it takes to compete. And then it allows the city managers and others that, you know, have advising over the capital improvement project programs to know where to place intentional investment. So, you know, you can find on our website our three-year strategic plan, our one-year action plans, we're very measured in everything we do. So I operate GPEC like a startup and like a private company. Startup because we never know where our money's coming from. Every year, I have to go back to the cities and ask for our annual contribution that we've held flat last several years. And every year, I'm raising about 500,000 of new dollars, every year. We have modest attrition, but we raise that kind of money every year for business attraction marketing in our competitiveness research. So that's really what's referenced here is long-term intentional planning really matters. Establishing an environment of innovation is really about playing to your industry strengths, and we talked about some of those as well. I'd love to hear from the council and crowd, you know, your thoughts on what innovation means and your base industries mean. And that would then drive me to give you more advice on how I would be marketing your identity to prospective investors. So I'm going to finish, I think I've got one slide left. This is the last one. This is probably the most important thing I'm going to talk about though. So after you've assessed kind of where your value proposition lies, you understand the competitive context, how you build a brand, position, and identity is so important. And I would even argue today, a change has occurred, instead of independently doing a tourism strategy and an economic development strategy, I'm seeing a merging of the two. Because livability, if you look at livability index, and there's all these measurements that assess, you know, why people are moving to markets, especially millennials and Gen X are moving where they want to live first before where they select their job, which is the exact opposite of baby boomer generation. Baby boomer generation historically had moved where jobs were and they'd make it work. The inverse is happening today. So livability does matter, quality of life really matters, but I think the confluence of those two constructs really matter. But how you really go out and represent the interests of the market and the, you know, the council's direction or the region's direction on identity has to be aligned with a clear value proposition with everybody on board, everybody being a brand ambassador, and then very being, being very laser focused, because I see a lot of EDOs nationally spend all their marketing dollars in a diluted way. They put too many industry strategies out, too many market strategies out, and as a byproduct, they don't get on anyone's radar or not enough radars. Instead, I'd be hyper focusing on one or two industry segments and one or two markets and playing, you know, to, whether it's cyber or you have to define what your industry opportunity is, and playing that as, you know, almost like in a microcosm of like a Boulder is to Denver, as a Prescott is to Phoenix, something like that, from a unique talent attribution standpoint. So with that, I'll pause and I apologize for going through a lot of technical stuff, but you know, that's what I see across the country is markets that are really wanting to grab hold of the opportunity and push their brand identity forward. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or any other observations that you or the crowd may have.
Okay, anybody can raise their hand and then we'll let Chris call them.
Gentlemen in the back?
Yes?
Yesterday, the press reported that you nice, so Larson and Company, what effect do you see that on the state's development?
Can you repeat the first part of the question?
These Phoenix newspaper reported that Larson and Company gone out of it, and they are a big bond house that drives these bonds and builds the markets. What do you see there?
Well, obviously, you're much well-read than I am. I haven't heard about, is it a bond company? Okay. Bond company, was it, and again, I'll have to read into that because I'm not exactly sure what the impacts will be.
Yesterday's paper.
Okay.
PBJ had it today, it's Lawson Financial, I think they did something wrong.
Okay.
And so they've been basically stripped of their ability to conduct financial business. I wasn't familiar with the firm, though.
Okay. It depends, I mean, if, I don't know if they hold public debt, I don't know if, you know, again, not knowing the depth of the company, what kind of, if they're in financial analysis or investing, so I really can't comment because I'm not familiar with the firm.
Chris, how do you define region? For us in Prescott, sometimes we tend to think very small, provincially. But do you see Prescott as being part of a larger Phoenix metropolitan region in its economic development, or would it be to our advantage to think more on a smaller regional basis?
Yeah, maybe, maybe in 20 to 30 years, we have flying drones taking people back and forth, which believe it or not, is not that far away. It's unfathomable, but it's not that far away. Is, you know, today, I would argue, it's not currently part of the MSA because I don't see it viewed as such. It is its own distinct trade area. I do, I think that you could play within kind of the broader context of the Phoenix identity and certainly the Arizona identity with a very particular angle. I think you could, for sure. There's assets here that don't exist anywhere else in the state, and that's what I would hyper specialize in. Our region today is really defined by, you know, the MSA with the exception of Casa Grande, which is a community about 30 miles south of greater Phoenix, which, you know, it's, has unique rail attributes, unique industrial land inventory, and the commute shed between Casa Grande and Chandler is so connected that it does. But today, I would say you're currently is a pretty distinct MSA or trade area outside of metro Phoenix.
I noticed in the Wall Street Journal today that there was an article that airplane manufacturing is backed up significantly due to the inability to get components. We used to have an aerospace company here and it got bought out by a company in Oregon and they just basically shut this one down because it was a competitor. So we have a large building. You know, with this news that we see in the Wall Street Journal about, you know, aircraft manufacturers are backed up six, eight, 10 months, and they can't actually finish the planes because they don't have the components. How would you look at us going out to try and determine where we might be able to get a company that would be startup or expanding that would want to come in here and utilize some of our, our building and people that probably used to work there?
Well, Mayor, first what I would do is look at, assess your supply chain in terms of what kind of raw components and what kind of, you know, advanced manufacturing or even manufacturing you have in the market. From a location quotient perspective, what is here? Because I just don't know. Trying to, if there is a higher degree of intensity from a labor force standpoint, meaning you have more people working in codes that those kind of firms would want, those kind of aerospace companies would want, you know, then you could hyper-target those specific firms based upon the research that would dictate who is actually producing the widget within the plane, within the supply chain. But to have a broad strategy to target those kind of firms, I'd be very careful about that. And so rather, I mean, there's so many steps that go into assessing your labor force, first, assessing your current base industry companies, so you know exactly who's here and exactly what they're doing, and do any of them play in the aerospace supply chain business today? Next, do you have the requisite facilities that are turnkey? You know, if you're confident you have the labor, do you have the building stock? Then it would be who are the companies that are in the aerospace supply chain external from Arizona today or external from the market today that you could go and target? That's how I would look at, you know, how we talked about earlier, that Joe down the street telling us, "Go look at aerospace," there's, that historically, it would be, "Let's go brand Prescott as an aerospace hub." The new model today is really targeting very specific companies with a very specific brand based upon all of the data that's proven you have a value proposition. Does that make sense?
One other thing, one of the major backups in aerospace too is software and cybersecurity and how that plays into the software within those, if that aircraft is causing some problems or the backup, we'll have everything talk to one another, which is kind of interesting. And a few of the things we're doing about Embry-Riddle.
Yeah, I was absolutely stunned, the, not spending a lot of time at Embry-Riddle previously. We announced recently this identity around sensors and the Internet of Things as the connected place is our brand identity. And that's largely targeted at cybersecurity, autonomous vehicles, healthcare wearables, and industrial automation, which is really machine learning and machines talking to machines. Think of that in industrial robotics. And I still think there's a segment of that overarching strategy that fits here, for sure. And I'd be happy to furnish all of the data that we've already polled and why we think Arizona is a strong fit for that. But I do think some of that could be parlayed into, into this community as well.
Chris?
Chris?
Go ahead.
No, that's great. Chris, I just want to thank you for coming to Prescott. Is there a template that's available for us to do some sort of a readiness assessment? I mean, does it look not only at, does it also look at space availability and buildings and?
Yeah, Councilman, I'd be happy to send you our template of how we interact with our communities.
That'd be great, yeah.
And they come in and do their own readiness assessment. We come in with our data in terms of them telling us what kind of industry they're targeting, how that fits in the regional context.
Right.
And then we give them the readiness assessment from our perspective.
Well, and I appreciate your point of view about the region because we have custom discussed that up here often. And so it's certainly something we need to stay with, that, you know, we're all part of this wonderful region that we call Prescott, Prescott Valley, Chino Valley, all of the area here. So I appreciate that. And the fact that you talk about, this is long-term. You're talking, this is not going to happen next year or the next year. So when you think about that, sometimes we just, "Oh, didn't happen in a year, didn't work." So thank you for that perspective of a 10-year.
Sure.
I wish I'd asked my question first because I was going to ask if you could do the community modeling for us even though we're out of the region?
Yeah. There's always one. Yeah. Yeah, so I'd be happy to help the community any way we can. So we've been set up for so long as a pioneering economic development shop that I did, going to do this across the country, and we'd be happy to provide any kind of support we can.
Thank you, Chris, I appreciate that. You know, one of the things you said that I thought was really telling, and I had never thought about it in these terms, is this intentional planning. And the idea that, and that's at the macro level, you're not just talking about land planning, you're talking about prospect planning and location planning and it being comprehensive across our region. That's something we need to do. And I guess my first question is, how do you start with something like that?
Yeah, so what's really interesting into the Councilman's question as well about, you know, being part of a metro or not, one of the key things I see across the country is usually if cities aren't working together, there's, you know, an elitist view of one community, there's a, you know, we're the blue collar community, we're the lifestyle community. The reality is, when companies think about trade areas, they're going to extract value off of all of the communities cumulatively. So to answer your question, you know, I would start, and usually there, I mean, there's consultants out there that do this. But, you know, I always start with, what are we trying, what's the identity we want over the next 20 years? Okay? Who do we want to be? Recognizing the existing base of residents, the, you know, and what the residents want, the existing base of industry. But I also overlay that, and this is where most people miss, is what's happening in macro level capital and industry trends, which is the backend of, we wouldn't want to be identifying with an industry that is becoming extinct. We want to be positioning our market for industries where there's going to be significant capital placement globally and where the United States has a unique opportunity to advance, our state has a unique opportunity to advance, sub-regionally, we have a unique opportunity to advance. So then I would go through, you know, a, an assessment of, you know, certainly your land plans, your employment centers. So in Phoenix, we do even with our cities too, employment center mapping. And what that means, you know, I always laugh when I hear like certified site strategies, right? You know, those, those were like really popular in the 90s around, you know, do you have the available real estate or not? And then the prerequisite infrastructure, you mean, that's like, if you don't have that, you're out. I mean, that's like, when I say it's 95, it's not a shot, that's just simply reality of a company will not move to a per a company will not move to a piece of dirt that they have to take two years to improve. It's not going to happen. So we have to start with the, the land planning side, then the real estate side, the assessment of labor, the assessment of industry. That leads to your cumulative plan. And I will tell you, the resident voice is critically important in this as well. I've seen this fail miserably across the country. I won't name names, but I've seen this fail miserably when the residents are left out. And the, the resident composition and thought of who the residents want the community to be is extremely important as well. And the charm you have in your downtown has to be maintained. It's such a, probably, probably get in trouble for saying this, but one of the coolest downtown cores in the entire state, you know. So really, really nice. And Brad's been selling me on summer residents up here already.
Please do. We'd love to have you.
And if you want to follow up and call me on, I'll lay that out exactly how we would do that if we were in your shoes.
I have one more question. You said it yourself. Some governments will say, "We just don't have the money." "We don't have a lot of money," but I'm hoping we can find something. But we have to be really careful with it and strategic. And you said targeting certain industries would be a better approach. So how do we, how do we know what buildings to build, what their parameters are, and whether they're going to be a moving target? By the time we get the building built, will it still be something that our target industries will want?
Yeah, great question, Councilman. So where I, where I would start on that question, the reality is, no one has an infinite amount of resources. So I would do nothing but a data assessment first to determine where should you be marketing? What is your brand identity? What's the value proposition you have to offer before you even have discussions about buildings? Before you have discussions about how you're going to deploy, to deploy your online identity, which is the new wave of inexpensive ways to communicate your platform? So the research side, much of which we've, you know, we just covered, I would start there. Move there into the digital mechanism of, I'll give you an example. Our website, which is not an expensive website. It looks like an expensive website, but it's really not. We have messaging that changes based upon the domain registration of the individual, where they're at locationally. So if you wanted, if you were in California and you went to GPEX's website and you were registered as an aerospace company, you're going to be going through our website, and there's going to be aerospace messaging with California bend to that. That's the difference of old versus new. Old is come to our website and here's a one-page newsletter or come to our website and here's a one-page collateral document. So the adjustment, and this all goes back to research and why our research team is so big. And everybody else nationally gets upset with me when I say that because it is a big investment we make. But it's intentional because I know what companies want today. And it's not the, the static flyer that gets outdated by the time it's printed. And it's the messaging that's constantly, you know, putting, being placed in front of them. So I would actually start with, you know, the market assessment, and then you can move into the digital marketing, those kind of strategies. And then you always have to have, though, once you get, I always talk to my team about, you know, as we fish, you know, we're fishing into various ponds. When you get a bite, the information that, that you have readily available when you get the bite is just as important as the messaging on the front end. So if you're fishing with certain bait, and once you get the bite, and the company bites on the hook and says, you know, "We are a software company from San Diego, and we're thinking about six markets, X, Y, you know, Z," then the reactive side has to be ready to respond to that. And if you're caught flat saying, "Well, I don't know anything about any other markets, but I want to sell you on Prescott," I'll tell you, you're going to be viewed differently. So I don't want to make this seem like a maze, and I don't want, you know, you to overthink this. But the data side really tells you where to fish and how to productively fish, more so than just, you know, a website. And that's, that's the change in behavior.
Christopher, a number of questions back here.
Mayor Protim's got one here.
I'm sorry. I didn't see that.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate you being up, as, as well as my fellow council members who chose to be here, do. You know, you made a couple of comments that mean something to me. I'm pretty happy with who we are. I don't want to be somebody else. I'm, I'm one of the residents that chose to live here because we're not Phoenix. I'm one of the residents that chose to live here because we're not Los Angeles, or Las Vegas, or some other place. You know, if I wanted a Sky Harbor Airport, I'd have moved to Phoenix. You know, I'm pretty happy with a third-tier airport in the middle of Ethiopia, so to speak, that is only 90 miles from Phoenix if I need to go there. You know, being the best that we can be is who we are. It means a whole lot to people that choose to live here. I mean, we don't necessarily want to go out and compete with someplace else to be what we're not. What we want to do is try and be who we are and be the best at who we are because that's why we chose to live here. If we would have wanted to be somebody else or somewhere else, we would have gone there. So one of the things that I'm very proud of is our identity. It's Arizona's Christmas city. I'm pretty proud of the fact we're the world's largest and oldest rail rodeo, not Payson, Prescott. I'm, I'm pretty happy with the fact that Prescott Valley thought so much of Prescott, they chose to take part of our name, you know? There, there's a lot of reasons why we live here. And, you know, there's a lot of reasons why maybe, you know, be careful of what you wish for because you can change the whole complexion of who you are by going out to try and be somebody different than what you've got. So I'm just sharing that with you.
Sure. I appreciate the, the remarks and thoughts. The, the remark I would give back to you is, regions or communities that remain stagnant are sliding backwards while every other community is moving forward. And so I'm not against changing a complexion or composition of, of a community with, in the face of the residents, first and foremost. But I do think there's some additive things that could be added here in terms of a jobs base that would continue to move this forward, but maintaining the balance of culture and identity that residents want.
And I appreciate that comment. And our job base has changed. Been here a long time. Our job base has changed in a manner that, you know, we have a lot of medical facility here because the community progressed into an elderly community. So of course, elderly people require a little bit more medical, you know? We also evolved into an educational area for what, you know, maybe we're not Los Angeles or we're not Phoenix, but, you know, we have a education base that's good for the community. We're pretty comfortable with it. You know, a lot of people bail out of Phoenix every week to come here. They, especially towards the weekend because they don't like Phoenix, or they don't like Las Vegas, or they don't like Los Angeles. But they come up here because we're something different. I would hate to think that we would forget who we are and why we are to try and go be something else that we're not. That's all I'm sharing. That doesn't mean that I want to stay stagnant. You know, there's a lot of people here that, believe it or not, even have Internet, that do business out of their homes. They don't necessarily have to go get bricks and mortar. There's a lot of things that are here that just aren't on the surface. So, and I appreciate you being up here, and I do appreciate economic development. But part of our economic development has been into home-based businesses, et cetera, where people have come here because they're entrepreneurial in spirit and have found a way to meld with the city of Prescott, Prescott Valley, Chino Valley, et cetera, and be able to be self-sustaining without being in competitive nature with metropolitan USA because we're not. So I'm just sharing that part of it.
Sure.
Chris, thank you for your presentation. I think it's valuable information for our community. The industry I'd like to address and get your input on is one that would be the least impactful to implement in our community, utilize existing resources, and that's the entertainment industry, motion pictures, television production. Historically, Prescott has been a center for production going back to the early teens when Tom Mixx made Killers. Hundreds of dirty motion pictures have been made here. Last year, we had a production company come and rent fire equipment, which they transported to Mexico and did a major motion picture starring Josh Brolin, which will release later this year, based on the tragedy of our 19 firefighters. It's a tragedy for all of us in many ways and economically to this community that New Mexico provided tax incentives to that production company to go to our nation. Years ago, I was involved in partnership with stage film and television production out of Phoenix. We had a budget. The state had the tax incentives. We lost all of that. I asked Noel Campbell, and he can talk to the governor, about re-implementing the tax incentives and form a building commission at the state level. We have one here in our, in our town. The answer I got back to Representative Campbell was, the governor did not want to go forward with setting up the commission because he had to leave the commission. We have in our community professionals with a great deal of background in this field who are willing to serve pro bono. But my question to you is, based on your input, what would you recommend this community do to formulate a plan to then go to the state and try to get our tax incentives put back into place? And it's plus dollars, every dollar spent, turned over eight times for a production company to our community.
Great, great comment, first of all. This is a tremendous opportunity for our state in changing, taking away the, the tax credits a few years ago harmed our ability to deliver against these studio interests. And I will tell you, this is kind of a broader comment, and I'll bring it back to the specifics, is, states across the country are either deciding to compete, meaning economic development programs, or rescinding them. There's very different strategies across the country. Some are saying, you know, crying corporate welfare and, and just eliminating their economic development toolkits, while others are enhancing their economic development toolkits. We're kind of viewed as in the middle, as a state. And I would say the, the conversation about, you know, film, for example, tremendous opportunities for Northern Arizona that we're missing 100% of the opportunity. And so, you know, I would love to support that and get, you know, be active in that effort. I don't know the issue with the governor. I haven't talked to him specifically about film or film tax credits since he became governor. This has been a conversation, though, down at the Capitol, which unfortunately, I have to spend a lot of time down there, too. But this is, when I look at, again, 10 to 20 years from now, and specifically rural Arizona, these are the kind of things that we need to be doing to support, you know, non-urban markets. And so I'd love to talk to you offline about that and support that going forward.
I, I talked to Sandra Watson about that, you know, when they took the tax credit a week ago. A few years ago, and I'm not sure if they took this one. They had a deal for anybody that you can invest in certain technology companies that were approved, and it was 20, it was a 20% tax credit up for $25,000, up to $200,000. And that's, I'm not sure if that's still in place or if they took that.
The Angel Investment Tax Credit.
Yeah, the Angel Investment Tax Credit. That's still in place. So then they just, so then I talked to her about the tax credit for, for the movie industry. And, and actually, I sent the example. That was in the paper about that to her. And, and then I, Keith Watkins and the rest of the people from the Arizona Commerce Committee. I've been hitting pretty hard when we need to get this tax credit back for the entire state. So she agreed with what we're saying. Now, what is that process? But it really is going to come from the Commerce Committee back up through the, it's kind of the underpart that goes back up through the legislature. So there is support from the Arizona Commerce Committee to do that.
Well, and, and part of that, too, I go back to competitive market context, how critical it is to understand what New Mexico has done intentionally. They've, they've taken our industry, unequivocally have taken our film industry. And other states, I mean, we're naive to think, "Well, things are just going to come here anyway," at least in my singular opinion. So I agree, we, there needs to be a unified effort, urban and rural together, as, you know, it's really through the ACA, which is the governor's policy recommendation arm. We do a lot of other things, too, where GPEX looks at other competitor markets and, and makes recommendations directly to the legislature on things we think are needed. We don't do film attractions. That's not in our scope of work, but I understand how important that is. You know, being in Yuma before, we had films in Yuma, and they haven't had one since I left. But that's, you know, nothing to do with me, more about not having the program. Yeah.
Hi, Chris. Thank you so much for coming up today. I've worked in the valley in the 1980s, 1990s. And I sat on the committee when Perry Mitchell was the mayor and the council in Tempe. And they had this idea to put a river in the desert, which nobody thought that would ever do anything. But Tempe was landlocked, but they were visionary enough to know that they had to go up for economic development. And they went to Phoenix, and they went to Mesa, and they said, "We want to build this river." And Phoenix had known, and Mesa had known. And Perry Mitchell said, "We're building ourselves," and they did. And that was almost 30 years ago. They were visionary enough. But Phoenix and Scottsdale and Tempe, Mesa, Chandler, Gilbert, they all had a different identity. And they all fought with each other. Phoenix, you know, fought with Scottsdale and Scottsdale. And I don't know how their identities were developed. I don't know how the, did Tempe develop their brand? Did Mesa develop their brand? Did Gilbert, did Chandler, Scottsdale, or did that just evolve? And with that question, what do we do here with Prescott, Prescott Valley, Chino, and Humble Deuce? Do we create the region first, or does each community have their own branding that they create, and then we go forward?
Well, great, great observation and question. So first, I would say, I think it certainly took leadership across the mayors and councils to decide that they were going to work together. And if, I was just, ironically, you mentioned that because I talked to a customer the other day, a client the other day, who said, "It's amazing that you built, you know, this lake along the 202 bisecting Tempe and Scottsdale. And whoever had the vision to do this and intentionally invest, what a brilliant idea," which is ironic now that his son is the mayor. And, you know, the other aspect to this, too, is, you know, being that it was so intentional, that was, that was 20 years ago, over 20 years ago, right? 30 years ago? Okay, I always say 20, so I'll correct that now. But when, when we say intentional planning takes years to develop, State Farm's putting 8,000 employees along the waterfront. And I could tell you 20 other companies we've, we've had the pleasure of working with that went there, again, because of the intentional investment and infrastructure. So that's one thing. Second is the, it does take mayoral leadership. I think it's up to the mayors on behalf of the residents to decide, "We must work together and see the bigger picture." And I always say this, too, to, you know, state and, and local partners. If we win, we should win together, and if we lose, we should lose together. And it, it, that's a hard conversation to have, though, if you have one or two that stick out and don't want to work together and cooperate. But the way I look at it is, if a new company comes in or we retain a company, we, we run the math for our cities every year that look at when a company goes to Mesa and, and seven other communities are impacted because the 200 resident, or 200-person operational base that's created will be spread across those seven cities. Across those seven cities, there will be X amount of residents impacted across multiple jurisdictions. Look how that dollar is translated or transferred across the market. So we spend a lot of time educating our mayors on one economic strategy. And there's no accident that we have everybody working together. There's absolutely no accident. Now, I will argue they do compete from time to time. They're competing for various things, federal dollars. They're competing, once, you know, we have a project, not to say that Mayor Lane's not going to be competing with Mayor Mitchell, competing with Mayor Stanton, trying to win the project, but there's no undercutting, there's no Chicago politics if anybody's from Chicago. You know, there's, I mean, it's, it's a very cordial yet competitive environment. And I would also argue this. In Phoenix, the big city mayor has to want to play ball. You have to have the largest city mayor ready to lead, but respect the peers. And that's really important. Again, not knowing the landscape here, I don't know. That's, that's just what I'm seeing in Phoenix. It's absolutely a prerequisite.
Hi, Chris. Thank you for coming up. It's kind of really refreshing to hear you speak. It's, because I've been involved down here in one of the most forward-thinking presentations in history. Leading to the survival and the economic outlook of Prescott. How do you bridge that divide from, you know, we have a large retirement community here that want to protect it the way it is, and I'm all for that, too. But I also recognize that we all have children and grandchildren and kids coming out of school that need to survive here as well. Is branding the answer? Are we branding Prescott, you know, to preserve what we have and can't sit? But we have to look towards the economic, you know, the development for Prescott for our survival. As you know, we have a large debt right now with our PSPRF, and our population is less than 40,000. So at $80 million in debt, that's $2 million per person, which is of course impossible to ever pay back down. But in the interest of trying to make Prescott move forward, preserve our history, and, you know, the, and make the economics down here be healthy for us for the future, how do you, how do you bridge that gap?
Yeah, you're certainly not the only community in this inflection point of wanting to ensure you preserve the identity from the past and current. But I, I would also argue, you can preserve and move a community forward at the same time. And often, I get, you know, leaders, even in Phoenix, for example, that, you know, a lot of this comes back to kids and grandkids and the talent leakage and the, how many times the individual, the kid graduates... the individual, the kid graduates high school, or community college, or four-year institution, and if they don't have the job opportunities, they're going to go where the job opportunities are, right? And so, there's a balance there. And again, I'm not in either camp, per se, of just preserve or totally innovate and change complexion. I don't think either of those strategies are absolute. But I do think, again, in getting the community to recognize the importance of moving forward, making the right kind of investments, the brand strategy, because again, the reality is why I say 20, 30-year strategies, which is, you know, what I'm focused on, you're going to have revenue dips and revenue, you know, at the local level and funding levels that, you know, ebb and flow. And so, that's why consistency matters. And again, across the country, I, you see protectionist, cities with protectionist strategies that don't want to grow, that don't want to evolve. I would argue evolution's going to happen, okay? At the same time, you don't have to change the culture or identity in a dramatic way, but enabling opportunities around your legacy assets that already exist is what most markets are doing, even if they want to preserve who they are. And it's a very, you know, threading that needle is very difficult, and that's why I go back to leadership. It's incumbent upon mayors and councils to work together and not create, you know, these strategies where it's us versus them, and it's really about moving markets forward collectively with collaboration and interaction.
Chris, we have a unique environment here because we have, I just came on for 10 months on the Economic Development Committee, and everybody in the community admired, well, first of all, we ended up separated. We have the downtown contingent, and then we had the north Prescott contingent, which is newer, and a lot of the talk there was exactly what you're talking about, the redevelopment. You see an environment where the two could coexist, like you have, you know, the cybersecurity, the office buildings, you know, that would enhance, just enhance the historic nature of Prescott. By dividing the two, we had people that were, you know, forward-thinking in the north, but also people that were interested in preserving and enhancing the historic aspect of Prescott.
So go back to what the city manager asked or made comment on. These need to be multi-dimensional. They have to have an overarching overall leadership structure, but your preservation of historic buildings and identity is one of those pillars. Another pillar is taking advantage of future employment quarters within the city's strategic planning model. Others will be the CIP, how do you use those resources to ensure that you're supporting both of those nodes? Another might be, you know, playing to legacy industry strengths, and how do you ensure that you have a bolted-on entrepreneurial strategy, so that as your, you know, legacy engineers have new ideas, do they have a pathway to drive new companies, to create new intellectual property in a market? So what I'm saying is there could be 10 different dimensions. All of these need to be under an overarching guided strategy, because if they're independent and not working together, they'll work against each other for resources.
We got a couple of questions here.
Chris, I guess I'd just like to make a comment, and then you feel free to respond to it. I think one of the biggest issues we have here in Prescott is our talent leakage, because we have such talent that comes from Prescott College, Yavapai College, and certainly Emory-Riddle. I mean, some of the brightest students in the state, and they are gone within two weeks of graduating, because there's very little opportunity for them here. So, and I also will go back to what you said about the residents, that we need to bring the residents along with us, because we need to know what they want, like Jim is saying. You know, there are some that would like to keep it just like it is, but we know either you're moving or you're falling behind. And so, I, I would like to see us, you know, I love the idea of the incubator and Emory-Riddle, and do it what we can to help promote that with a P3. And so, I hope that as a council, all of us, with the other councils that are in the area, can certainly work with Brad and with Jim and with you, and I love Michael Broggy's idea with the film industry, bringing that back. So again, I appreciate you being here, and I'd love to find jobs for all those brilliant students that are leaving our area.
Let me just add to that, that many of the students that do graduate from here and leave would rather stay here.
That's right.
But the jobs aren't here, so.
Thank you. Here again, we are changing. Prescott's been changing since it became a community back in 1864, you know? You don't have horsewires running around down the streets anymore and stuff like that. Prescott is kind of keeping up, very similar to what Connie in the back was referencing. We are evolving, and we have changed, and we do have certain types of entrepreneurial endeavors going on here in Prescott, especially out at the airport, especially with things that have to do with cyber technology and border stuff, you know, cop stuff, police stuff, stuff, you know? There are things that are, yeah, security, that's a good one. There are things that are taking place in Prescott that are commensurate with what's going on in the country today. I think the country as a whole, I don't think Prescott's alone, the country as a whole endures drainage of youth, because that's what youth typically does. They chase something different than what's at home. What they had at home is what they kind of want to go experience, something different. That doesn't mean that homes should change. What it means is home's always home, and home will change simply because home changes over time. We didn't have the airport 30 years ago that we have today. We didn't have the police capability today in the community, or the fire capability that we have today. We do evolve, okay? And the kids that graduate high school, or graduate up at Fire Science out of Yadda Pi, or they go to the best environmental school in the country, they, some people say it's one of the top two, I'd like to think it's number one. And we definitely have the best aeronautical university in the country, if not in the world, right here in Prescott, all right? Now, the fact that we're educating people to take care of the rest of the world is not a bad thing, that could be a good thing, too. I mean, maybe we're not coming up with the guys that are, you know, swapping out hearts every 20 minutes or something of that nature, but they do get a really rounded education here. And they do have the opportunity, not only to live here in a community that is not like Phoenix, we're not, you know, you've got people that come here to ride their bicycles, you've got people that come here to hike your trails, and people want to live here because, guess what? You can ride your bicycle and hike your trails. You don't have to pave every one of them, you don't have to close down this, or we're in the National Force, et cetera. There's a happy collaboration of things here in Prescott, and we are working to be the best at who we are. Doesn't mean we have to copy somebody else. We're doing a pretty good job. I appreciate you pointing out that, yeah, it'd be nice to have some more films done here. It was pretty neat when we did Cannonball Run, or Ben Vereen was here, and we did something with him, and, you know, a little bit of this and a little bit of that, and that's really good stuff. And I think the marketplace will dictate, you know, that's what happens. A free market has said here, you know, this is a pretty neat place to come, and pretty neat place to make movies in. And I don't think we necessarily need to go out and try and make them come here, but we shouldn't chase them away either, so.
Well, since you're looking up here, I'll ask a question. You know, you've talked about branding or rebranding, you've talked about incubation. You know, we're talking about these here in Prescott and figuring out exactly how we're going to do it. Can they, should they be done sequentially, or can they be done in parallel? And, you know, are we getting ahead of ourselves even looking at that, those two ideas right now?
Well, I think you can, you know, first, again, as I would start, is identifying who do you, who do you want to be, and who, ultimately, where can, where do you want to market to?
So that's basically the branding, is that correct?
Branding side, I would, I would start there with data that's going to lead you to a branding emphasis before deployment of any resource. You have to get everyone in a uniform understanding of where you're headed and why you're headed there, and what the value proposition is. There are teams, however, like we contract, so we have a lot in-house talent, but we also contract with a lot of firms that give us advice on industry messaging, they give us advice on collateral positioning, SEO, and how we're doing our search engine optimization on our website. So this is a cumulative set. Once you identify your one or two spaces in terms of brand, you know, branding, then it's really about the mechanics of how to deploy your resources most effectively. And we constantly evaluate that. And so, you know, that's, that's where I would start, you know, again, before, I would start with the data side, again, unrelated to the stuff I talked about, you know, with your city manager, but the branding piece, I would start with, where do you think your most salient opportunities are, based upon what the data reflects? Identify those industries, and then you can talk about the mechanics of how to deploy that into a brand position.
So I guess, since we know right now to get the resources, like for the incubation, we're probably talking about a two, three-year period when you're looking at grants and stuff, so it's probably going to be sequential, just by the virtue of the time it takes to get the resources. So we can start the branding now and probably have it done in a, in a period of time in which it would make sense to move on to the incubation. Is that correct?
Hey, Chris, incubating, I just want to, and Harry, you talked about this before, and I will make this really clear, and, Chris, you can, you can yell at me about it. If you have money, we can incubate. We could incubate projects and technologies that come out of, say, Emory-Riddle or something like that. The issue is if you're going to go grants, and you're going to go public, it's going to take you twice as long. The branding, the messaging, positioning is critical, because who are you, what do we do? The second piece is, and I'm the, and Harry, we talked about this in Bend, Oregon, where they had 21% unemployment, it's a lifestyle place, people were coming from Silicon Valley, they all moved down there and they decided, I don't want to spend $9,000 on an apartment in San Francisco, I want to figure out how to live here, I love it here. Thus came the Silicon Valley, we started an investment fund, and they could incubate those technologies, and I'm not talking millions, 50,000, 100,000. From that created job creation off those technologies that were almost projects. From that, what they did is they became, in less than four years, the second-largest technology conference in the entire Northwest, and they now have $40 million in private venture money to invest in business technologies that kept, and they don't even have a college. So what I'm trying to say is, the timeframe that we look at, one would be to move a company here is one thing, B is to create internal versus external, of how do we create that environment that makes those seeds start with our students and with our people that live here? Would you just give a thought, Chris?
I agree, I holistically agree. So I think, maybe to answer your question better, so the branding side, I think, happens immediately, in my perspective. Concurrently, you're working on the in-market side, which is how are we preparing incubation, the acceleration of ideas to become commercial IP and new companies, and that's largely done through grants and accessing, you know, additional resources. And concurrent to that is building the overall leadership construct to ensure that you have sustainability across the political subdivisions. I think you do all three of those, you know, together, but the branding piece is probably the expeditious aspect of this all, to get to market first. And the others are a long place, and, but are absolutely required. I'll give you one example, too, that's, there are these groups like Tech Shop, for example, that support communities like this and others. We have a small pod out in Chandler, where they partner with the community and actually have resources to, what he described, place capital into companies or ideas and new people, but they build largely the product set, so they, or the equipment sets for your Emory-Riddle grads to experiment on real-time 3D printing, on, you know, things that are disruptive technology-enabling pieces of equipment today. These are across the country, and they're happening. So those are, that's another angle you could play, beyond just a standard, you know, incubator, but partnering with an entity that also brings something additive to the conversation would be something I'd be thinking about.
Any other questions? One back there.
You talked a little bit about how you would join your economic development with tourism, but I didn't hear a lot about how you've actually marketed your tourism specifically down in the Phoenix area. Can you touch on maybe how you would strategize with tourism specifically for the area?
Yeah, great question. So the question's about linkage with tourism and economic development. So we, we've seen our state do that to some degree, not as much as I would have even liked, you know, largely from the perspective of, when I travel to London, or Shanghai, or anywhere else globally, the identity for Arizona, and this is probably a little bit selfish, because I'm charged with bringing jobs to Arizona, but the view is generally, it's the Grand Canyon, it's sunshine, it's, and that's all positive. The challenge, though, is that doesn't translate to the industry executive, who doesn't realize we have strong, capable labor pools, we have strong industry dispositions, all the other aspect is law. So what I, and this is more of an aspiration, I don't see, you know, us doing this great yet, nor are we doing it well in greater Phoenix. I am seeing across the country, though, smaller regions that put their tourism dollars and economic development dollars together, and message to the individual, but also at the same time have a lens that you can co-promote tourism and lifestyle, along with the livability towards, you know, a young executive wanting to move to your market, or a seasoned executive that, you know, wants the family aspects and livability attributes of your downtown. So that's what I mean by that, is ensuring that you're not just keeping separate tourism and economic development, but rather putting them in play, so that when you're, like, one example that I thought was actually pretty interesting is Scottsdale, when I was in New York City last week doing some media, I walked through the turnstile, and it was, was it Chue Scottsdale? Well, it's not that great, if I can't remember it, yeah. Okay, Experience Scottsdale. And so, I had our team check out, and a lot of the experience messaging is all, is in addition to Visit Scottsdale, it's got, you know, the lifestyle, the night, the night environment, all the other stuff that young millennials might want, showcases Yelp and Uber, and all these other companies that, you know, have operational nodes in the market. So that's what I mean by bringing tourism and economic development together. Does that answer your question?
I don't.
What else did I miss?
Well, I guess I want to know specifically what you would, what your recommendations would be for Prescott. So outside of just downtown, so we have our summer concerts here that we currently do, but what else for Prescott would you recommend, as far as bring tourism or generate tourist dollars here? Councilman Lamerson already said that we have a strong tourism market here, we get a lot of people that come up to get out of the summer heat in Phoenix, we have a lot of people that get out of the competition from California and Phoenix, it's a big city to come here. So how else would you recommend, that we generate tourism here in Prescott?
Well, once I get my summer house here, I'll spend time here, and I will tell you, I really, I've only spent a few weekends here, so I can't really tell you exactly how I would, you know, sell the market after time, I'm sure I'd have a lot of ideas, but, yeah, and so I just don't think I can really answer your question with, you know, a lot of depth. But once I do spend time up here, give me your card, and we'll, we'll exchange ideas on how best to promote the community.
I'll get it to you after the speech.
All right.
Well, we'll see that. Sometimes when I'm traveling, I run into people, and they say, where are you from? I say Prescott, and they say, oh, I love Prescott. Why, have you ever been there? In some cases, they have, in some cases, they haven't. But we also know that there's some people that have come here because they've, there's some tourist aspect they like. They came here, saw it, they liked it, they wanted to move their companies here. And sometimes they're able to do that, sometimes they just couldn't, couldn't make it work. We do have one entrepreneurial group in town right now, I think it's a builder, a real estate developer, and some other folks. And what they're doing is they're trying to find properties around Prescott and Prescott Valley, different-sized parcels, and they've already determined the types of buildings that can go on them, at various-sized buildings. And also, they're getting them, all these permitted now. They're already determining, basically, what the building has to have in it, and all the utilities and everything that's going to support the building. Really, all they need to do is have a company come in and say, yeah, we want a building here, and this is the size, and oh, by the way, this is the way we need to configure it inside. And they can produce that in 120 days, they say, if they have this permitting process totally complete. Do you think that's a valuable asset for us?
Yeah, Mayor, when we talk to our communities about community readiness, these are the exact things we talk about. So best case is to have a vertical building. Next best case is to have, you know, everything ready in drawings form, approval form, that they can pull the trigger and build the building. If they could do it in three months, that's great. The general pulling the permit going vertical, and at least in Phoenix, will take, you know, at a minimum, six months. So if you can do three months, that's a competitive advantage for you. The next stage I even see is, you know, which is very difficult, but, because you have to get the private developer or private entity to want to go down the path of getting everything ready, but I will tell you, if you don't have everything ready, that's when you get taken off the list. They may love the community, but if you don't have, you know, a building schematic, an architectural rendering of what the building looks like, feels like, specifically if it's not built, that's setting you, you know, further down the line of risk. Do they have, you know, the ability to actually construct the building? So you're trying to mitigate risk all along this horizon, and so what, what this group's doing is exactly what I would be advising someone to do, so that, it's almost like a paper permit, you're ready to pull the trigger tomorrow when you have that option.
Right. Any other questions? Comments?
Chris has about 25 copies of his presentation on the seat up here, if you've won a copy of it. I've sent to the mayor the electronic version of it, it's, you don't get a physical one, but this was really very helpful and very insightful for me, and I hope it was for you. This is just the first stone that we're turning, but I feel like there's some momentum. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Chris and Brad, and everybody that came out to ask questions today and learn a little bit more about how we're trying to move forward with economic development. So thank you for coming.